There you go, hit that gap, I'm making it sit down.
That's not, that's not nice. It's not nice at all. Good morning to everyone, and I'd like to remind everyone to please be sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position, and also please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order in the absent of our city clerk. Again, we have our city attorney, Lee Roberts, will serve as clerk of this session. The chair will call on Lee Roberts for the roll call.
Council President, Dr. Cynthia Toz.
Here.
Kent Back.
Here.
Councilman Johnny Cannon.
Here.
Councilman Ben Reed.
Here.
Councilman Debrick Williams.
Here.
Councilman Jason Wilson is absent today. Councilman Thomas Worthy.
Here, sir.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask the city engineer Heath Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day that you've given us. You've blessed us with, Father. We thank you for the option to know you, Father, as our Lord and Savior personally, Father. We thank you for that salvation that you freely give, yet we will never deserve. I thank you, Lord, for the ability to serve you and the capacity you've given us, Father, and I pray for this council and this city, Father, as we go through the business at hand today, Father, that we would do it in accordance with your will, never our own will, Father, that we would know you and stay locked in and surrendered to you and your will at all times. May we always bring you the honor and glory that you so awesomely deserve. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time, we'll have an update from our EMA agency. Ms. Gold. Good morning.
I'm Mark Golden, representing the EMA today. Ms. Gaither sends her regards. The numbers have not updated today. These are yesterday's numbers. In the state of Alabama, there are 200,656 total cases, 3,120 deaths. There have been over 20,000 new cases in the last 14 days. That's out of, in the past 14 days, over 500,000 diagnostic tests have been performed in the state. Almost 8 million have been tested in the state of Alabama to date, with over 21,000 hospitalizations and 84,000 presumed recovered patients in the state. In Edgewall County, we're looking at 4,967 total cases to date, with 60 deaths. In the last 14 days, we've had 644 new cases reported. Comes out to about a 46, 47, 48 case per day, if my math is right. That's in the last week, actually. We are still in the high category. There were 49 cases reported yesterday, 263 in the last six days, which is, yeah, 48.43.83 cases per day for the last six days. So we're averaging 40, between 40 and 50 cases per day. A lot of that's dependent on when the data comes in. Sometimes a doctor's office might hold on to data three or four days and then dump it, and other places report every day. It's just, that's why you see the fluctuations every day. Still, the 25 to 49 age group is the most infected across the state. It's running at about 38 percent, and still our seniors are experiencing the most deaths of all cases. The most important thing this week that's happened is Governor Ivy has extended the safer-at-home order until December the 11th, and the mask ordinance has been extended until then. Also, the state of emergency had expired, but it has now been extended until January the 7th. So that's an additional 60 days. We're still in a state of emergency. We are still under the mask order. I want to remind everyone that Quality of Life is going to have a drive-through flu-shot and COVID testing clinic Friday, the 13th, this Friday, from 9:00 to 11:00, and then from 1:00 to 3:00, and it's going to be at the J.W. Stewart Clinic on Springfield Avenue. The vaccine, a lot of people have been hearing talk about a vaccine. I believe it's still in its third clinical trial. I think Pfizer is the company that's closest right now. I think they're going to, they're going to have something soon, but we don't know. Who knows? The federal and state agencies have been working on their vaccination plan, and we at the EMA are also currently working on the vaccination plan for Edgewall County in conjunction with the Department of Public Health and other agencies. Any questions?
Can you explain the stay-at-home order to us?
It's actually a safer-at-home order, which suggests that people should stay home, you should social distance, which means no, no closer than six feet from a non-family group, that you should wear a mask outside, and that you should avoid large gatherings, unless a six-foot social distance can be maintained at all times. That's it, that's it in a nutshell.
I have a question also.
Yes, sir.
You said we have 60 deaths, and last week we had 52, if I, if I remember correctly.
Yes, sir.
So we had eight new deaths in one week.
I believe so, based on the numbers.
This is real. We need to wear a mask. It's not a political statement, wearing a mask. It's going to save lives. It may save your own life. If you don't want to wear the mask, think of it as you've protected your neighbor. Love your neighbor and wear the mask.
Okay.
All right, thank you. You have a great day.
Thank you. As we continue our agenda, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting that was held November 3rd.
Shall move. Second. Those in favor to approve the minutes, let it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the minutes are approved.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of account for the week of October the 30th through November the 5th.
Shall move. Those in favor to ratify the payment of accounts, let it known, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify the payment of accounts.
Madam President, if I may just to appoint the clarification of particular, I wish Jason was here, if Counselor Wilson was here to give it, but some time ago, we had a discussion at the council.
About this particular line item on our agenda, and in particular, it was, there was a concern raised about having to ratify these after the fact without the benefit of a review of the payments beforehand. So, so I guess mainly for Kent and anybody else that doesn't recall that conversation, but we, as a council, you have the ability to, to review those payments ahead if you so choose to. Now, obviously, that's not something that we have to do, but, but you do have the ability to review those payments ahead of time, and I know Councilman Reed remembers the discussion because we debated it for a couple of weeks, but, yeah, there's definitely the ability to review those payments ahead of time. So if you, if you've ever wondered that we're ratifying without the benefit of review, you have the ability to review.
And that was a question that I had asked the clerk several months ago, maybe even last year, concerning that particular item, because it was addressed to me that, so that's not, that's not illegal, is it?
What's illegal?
Is number, the item, item number seven.
We actually.
No, the law actually requires that the council approve or ratify the payment of accounts.
Yeah, we actually get a report.
But after, what is it, this is after the fact?
We actually get a report.
Okay.
During the week, we get a report.
Okay.
And for public disclosure, I receive an email from Brandon Phillips in the Finance Office every week, and I, and I review those expenses on a weekly basis since I was elected to the council.
We used to, we used to get that copy and it was put in the one box. It was only one form, and we saw all that, plus we saw the payroll, and the clerk had that one moment, one set, and we all reviewed it and checked off and read it. Now, what are they doing that now? I haven't seen one in a pretty good while.
It's in your, it's in the filing cabinet up there in the office up there where all your mail is.
Yeah.
It's all printed out for that week. It's got every, the top person that made the most that week, all the way down to the lowest on payroll, and then there's always another copy in there for other payroll expenses.
Well, I get that. I just get it through an email.
But we used to get all of the payrolls. We used to get all that, along with the payroll.
Yeah.
But hell, you're just starting, the payroll's still coming. Might want to ask.
Proclamations. We have, we'll start with our unfinished business. We have an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 during budget, and this ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It reflects receipts of a Bureau of Justice Assistant grant and expenditure tools of funds related to the purchase of 42 ballistic vests and new hires over a one-year period. The amount is $40,950, with the city being responsible for $20,475. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Shall move.
This ordinance, I'm sorry.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ordinance carries to adopt.
This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1511 Sarah Street in District 1. This is Billy R. Whitsonett and Gary W. Boggs being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? All right, sir, if you will come and give your, state your name and your address.
I'm Billy Whitsonett, 1515 Sarah Street East, guess, and I bought the property 1511 from Gary Boggs.
Pardon, you said you?
I bought the property from Gary, Gary Boggs.
Oh, you bought the property from him?
Yes, ma'am.
How long ago was that?
Late last year.
Okay, so what is, what is your, I guess your question to the council?
Well, I come to see if, you know, if they're going to demolish the house. I mean, because I ain't got no use for the house. I just bought it for the property, and the house is in bad shape, falling down, yeah.
Okay.
We'll take care of that for you.
I sure would appreciate, because it ain't nothing but a rat and snake, Dean.
Okay. So you're not really in opposition of the house being torn down?
Yeah, I just want it towed down, that's all. I want to keep it clean around here.
You do know we'll charge you when we tear it down?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Everything got a price this day.
Some of them have, some of them have steep prices.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. We'll, we'll, we'll listen to our building director, and we'll, you'll hear the results in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in July of 2019. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Okay. Mr. Whitsonett, before we make, before we make the motion, I would just like to appreciate you for coming up here, basically, and being honest, because a lot of people will come up here and they want you to give them 30 days, knowing that the house cannot be repaired or anything that can be done about it. So I appreciate you coming and being honest about what you want done, or you're not in opposition of what the city is trying to, trying to do. So I make a motion that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay, so what, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it known by, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
So I don't know exactly when, but the city will tear down, and then they'll send you a bill.
I appreciate it, man. Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you.
And I want to thank you for being honest, wanting to come and pay us, because not many folks want to pay after we tear them down.
The next item, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution. That's a sentence.
Number 11.
Number 11, I'm sorry. Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 849 Hutchins Avenue in District 2. This is Judy Fitz and Zane Fitz, mortgage in favor of Jim Walter Holmes and Company, and Bruce L. Brisson as trustee of Midstate Trust X being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Mr. Harbison, tell me that's a screen in the front of that house. That's not the whole front of the house being open, is it?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
It wasn't important, never mind.
Is the house, is that, that's interesting. Is that a house open in the front? He wanted to know, is that a screen? Or is that just a shadow?
It's just boarded up, the front of it is, yes.
One day, we'll get real pictures.
Madam President, on 849 Hutchins, we filed this case in June of 2019. There have been no improvements, there are no permits, we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Okay, all right. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 1508 Garfield Avenue in District 5, State of Alabama redemption right of Reva Holofield and her heirs, our estate being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak, who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this in November of 2019. There have been no improvements, there are no permits, we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second. Who is the second?
I haven't asked that question to us.
You weren't here last week, were you?
No. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
From last week, if you all want to go kind of slow. Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance of an accessory building on properties located at 2205 Hill Avenue in District 6, Trenna, I'm going to say Tritana or Trenna, A.B. Samuel and Philip Hunter, subject to a mortgage in favor of American Trust Mortgage Company is subject to a mortgage in favor of HSBC Mortgage Services, the last known owners. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a burned house, burned in January. We actually filed our case in January of this year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance of an accessory building located on properties at 3415 Madison Avenue in District 6, Bobby J. Nichols and Robbie S. Nichols in care of Randall Wardworth and the Gaston Corporation being the last known Is there anyone speaking opposition? Anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a garage, and we have just recently filed a case on the house as well. We'll be presenting that in the next few weeks. We filed this case in June of 2019. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
All right. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, our final item is a resolution awarding bid number 3445 for police vehicle safety equipment. The fleet maintenance manager has recommended awarding the bid to Dana Safety Supply Company, and the amount is $8,790.75. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Shall move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Do I have a motion? Who seconded that?
Devin, Councilman Williams. I'm Councilman Back, I think.
I will.
You need one?
You seconded?
I did. I told you I'd go slow.
Iba told me to make sure you get it back, full disclosure, Jennifer's watching to back me up. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one request from Parks and Rec. It's a resolution authorizing amendment to an agreement with Coca-Cola Ballin Company, United Central LLC doing business as Oxford Coca-Cola Ballin Company.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor of considering the resolution as an item of, under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous consent has been given to consider this item under new business. Move for adoption, please.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any more new business?
Councilman Back. Councilman Back?
I have one. Madam President, this comes from Parks and Rec. This is a resolution authorizing participation in the senior nutrition program and grant.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor of considering the resolution as an item under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous consent has been given to consider the item under new business. Move for adoption. Second. I picked one.
Okay. Is there any new business?
I'm going to vote on that.
Huh?
We got to vote on it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Madam President, just a point of reference for this request that we just adopted, it's for $119,096, and it's for the senior nutrition program, which is a feeding program at Elliott Community Center and at Harbor Community Center for senior adults. I think I heard this morning, we feed about 20 per day, Monday through Friday, and we also deliver about 20 meals. So this is, this is your tax dollars at work, this is taking care of those that are in need of help, that are elderly, and I'm proud that our city participates in this. We have a, a grant from the federal government of about $10,000 that helps in this expense, but this is a vital program. There's elderly citizens in our city that may not would have food if it weren't for the efforts of Parks and Recreation and of the, the City of Gaston and the folks at Elliott Community Center and at Harbor Community Center. So very proud that we can reach out and help those that are in need.
Okay. Did we vote on it?
Do we vote on it?
Okay. Is there another item of new business?
Yes, Madam President, it's my honor and privilege to bring this up today. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent, it's a resolution authorizing economic development agreement with the Endros Enterprises LLC and Fourth Avenue Supermarkets Incorporated for grocery store to be in the Cannonbury Station in Alabama City.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor of considering the resolution as an item under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous consent has been given to consider the item under new business.
I move to adopt, please.
Second. I'll give that one to Worthy. All right, those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Councilman Cannon, would you?
I will. This is, the grocery store people is going to spend $1,770,000 on the property in there. They're going to employ at least 65 employees with a total projected annual revenue of $1,352,000, and the city is going to rebate some tax to them, and there's a clause in here, if something happens and they don't stay long enough, we will get our money back. So, you know, we're, you can't lose something that you never had. That's what I've been telling people this week. They ask me about some rebates and stuff, and I say, well, we've never had the rebate, so, you know, we're just, you can't lose something you never had. But this will be something that the people of Alabama City and all of Gaston, the mountains, South Gaston, the whole city will be proud of.
All right. Well, I've got a bad announcement to make.
Yeah.
This is scheduled for a public hearing next week.
Iba has just said we can't do it this week.
I knew this was scheduled for a public hearing next week, and me and Frankie had been talking about it.
Yeah.
But I thought since he was probably taking Iba's place, you're a little bit smarter than he was, but I foresee that Ms. Iba's not here, so we're just doing the best we can.
I've never claimed to be smarter than Ms. Iba.
What about Dale?
So Councilman Cannon, so Councilman Cannon knew this in pre-council, when he suggested to bring it up as new business.
I'm going to have to keep a closer eye on Councilman Cannon.
And I thought the attorney might call me down on this, but he didn't, so I guess I'll have to rescind all this, and we'll do it next week.
We'll do it next week.
Now, more people are going to know about it anyways. This is two times we've done it, now next week will be three.
We'll just do it again next week.
And I will be here next week to do this.
Now you see why I listen to Iba Nelson?
Thank you, Iba, we appreciate it.
I'd be glad when Iba comes back and I have to spend one meeting, I'd be glad when she's back.
Lee, you don't have to take that.
Lord have mercy. Complain, complain, complain.
Lee, you don't have to take that.
You just have to.
We have announcements, our. We have announcements, our comments, we'll start with you, we'll start and go around. Councilman Beck, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanna echo what the EMA spokesperson said, and what many of us have been saying, that, you know, COVID has not gone away, it's still here, numbers are increasing, I don't think anybody's advocating that we go live in a cave or anything like that. I think what most people are advocating is just to be smart, wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands, and, and be particularly aware of where you're congregating and who you're congregating with. The crazy thing about this is, nobody knows if they have it or not, if they're asymptomatic, and I think fifty percent of the population that have are asymptomatic, so just be careful and do unto others as you would have them do unto you, and, and, and think of others, as opposed to thinking of yourself. I've been wearing this mask now all morning, and I'm burning up. I mean, I am hot, I just don't like it, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it on, because I think that's the right thing to do, it's the respectful thing to do, and I think if we can do that, we can get through this holiday season, maybe with as minimal amount of, of infections and, and problems as, as possible. So just take care of yourself and, and take care of others, and maybe we can all get, get through this. I wanna reiterate our senior feeding program, it's just, that's been on my mind all morning. I, it's great that the city's able to do that, we should be taking care of one another, and there's people that, that do need that kind of assistance, so it's, it's wonderful that we're in a position to do that. And, Madam President, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman, will you?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a reminder, we haven't talked about it today, but, but I think it's Tropical Storm. At the moment, Tropical Storm Eda is, or Etta, is expected to, to make land this week, so, and again, we're just on the, on the, you know, on the tail of, of two previous storms that have hit the Gulf Coast, so, you know, and obviously we'll get a big, we'll get, we'll get a big percentage of the rain and, and the aftermath once it makes, makes land, so please look out for seniors and those who are in low-lying areas, and, and heed all of the public safety warnings from our, from our E and A and other emergency groups as we brace for this, brace for this storm. I think kudos go out to the, the, the citizens of Etowah County. In terms of voter volume, we set records, four, forty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-five people voted, which is, which, which eclipsed the two thousand eight mark that was set at the time. So, you know, we give people, we give people a hard time about apathy, voter apathy and not voting, but there was very good turnout this time. Forty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one in-person ballots were cast, and, you know, and this is a number I thought I would never see, thought, I thought I would never see this number, five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two absentee ballots. Now, in our last election, there was about forty absentee ballots cast, so, you know, that, obviously that's not apples to apples completely, but it puts it in perspective. The absentee ballot process is something that just doesn't get utilized at a high level. People generally like to go in person and cast their vote, but in this pandemic environment, people took advantage of the process that's existed for years. So, so again, I just appreciate people for being willing to go out, says a lot, don't, really don't, you know, you know, I care who people vote for, but obviously that's kind of a personal decision. What you like to see, generally, as an American citizen, is people go out and exercise the right, and so to a large degree we did. Sixty-three point six percent of registered voters went out. Not good, not, not, not great, but respectable. You know, more, more than half, you know, almost two thirds, or right at two-thirds of registered voters went out, the record, you know, so people can log it and maybe try to target eclipsing it in future elections, it's sixty-four point five percent, that was set in twenty sixteen. So, so again, just, just, there's, there's a great opportunity for us to get better, but this election was definitely a step in the right direction in terms of people participating, so I do appreciate that, and I think, again, we need to, as, as we can be critical sometimes, we need to pat people on the back when they do something good, and I think that was a good thing. November twenty-first of this year, from twelve PM to two PM, James Memorial Baptist Church will be having a Thanksgiving meal distribution. Again, this is another, another example of, of people stepping up and, and filling the void that's left with us not being able to be, do our big community event this year. And again, this will be at James Memorial Baptist Church, twenty-one twenty-five Ewing Avenue, and they will be distributing five hundred meals on a first-come, first-served basis, so please log that, and they've established a two-hour window, they're probably not gonna make it to one o'clock, you know, if, 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 if history serves as any indicator, they're probably not gonna make it to one o'clock, but, but again, wanna, they, they wanted us to make sure that we let the public know, so, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Councilman Worthy?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanna make an announcement of the Thanksgiving dinner feeding we'll be doing at Carver Community Center. It'll be from eleven AM to two PM. It's carryout only, to-go plates, and hopefully we'll be doing deliveries also. And then I also wanna thank people for going out to vote. Like the Councilman Williams said, we had a lot of people to go out and vote. I was out all day that Tuesday, and we had long lines. At all the polling places, we had long lines, so that was, that was, that was good. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Council President. I want to say that I was out last week doing, working at the post, but I wanna say I really appreciate everybody in Alabama City, the Mission Center down there, all the churches, all the Salvation Army, and everyone that helped with the candy giveaway on Wall Street. There was a bunch of naysayers called me on the phone, and they had seen me out when we planned on the drive-through, "Nobody will be there, nobody will be there, you're messing up, you're messing up." Well, if you was down there, it started at five and ended at seven-thirty, and was supposed to end at seven. At five o'clock, we had about a hundred and fifteen cars lined up from railroad tracks there on Railroad Avenue all the way down there to, near to the Wind South Credit Union, and by the time we was getting some of those cars in, there was three rows lined up at the railroad tracks, all the parking lots there were full, and they had a curve all the way going down one side of the road, all the way down to CVS Pharmacy. There was probably in the neighborhood of at least six hundred and fifty cars that went through there, no telling how many kids went through there, we had just one little problem, it was somebody that thought he should have break line, I think, in front of somebody, but we took, they took care of that, so that wasn't really a problem. But I do appreciate everybody that came out, all the kids that was there, that was just a real good time, everyone I seen had a mask on, there was nobody walking in the streets, you know, so we, we took care of all that, it was really safe. Then I wanna say to Lee Roger Roberts, you are doing a pretty good job, Lee, and I do appreciate you, but you're just not like Iba, I'll just be honest with you, I just wanna tell you the, the truth, you're not like her, and I really do miss her. You're kinda more, well, I was gonna say more like Dale, but Dale might be a little bit smarter, but, you know, I do appreciate you, Lee, and I know you'll probably get me after all this, but I did wanna talk about the grocery store, I did go to Trustful this week, me and my wife, went shopping at the grocery store in Trustful, that's coming to Alabama City, it's well, well, well stocked with stuff, the aisles are wide, the floor is completely clean, they've got good deals on stuff, they've got meats, they've got produce, you name it, they've got it, and I'm thinking, the, the prices are really nice, too, really good prices, and people in Gaston will really benefit from this store, and I can't wait for it to open. Also, too, in District Six, I can't talk about it, but we've got four more projects that's working right now, so we're just gonna right now, just gonna concentrate on the grocery store, but you will be surprised, it is a nice store.
Councilman Reed?
Yes, other than that, everything coming to Alabama City, I wanna give a shout-out to Carol Huckabee. Carol Huckabee came to us about six months ago with an idea of taking stray dogs and cats off the streets, which there are a lot, humane society's full, spaying neutering them and deworming them, and being sure to take care of the heartworms and all this, and she takes them, gets them all ready, and ships them north. Those people up there really want dogs, but I'm telling you what now, that lady is for real. Well, the reason I bring it up now to give her some kudos is she does need financial help. Her address is number one Perkins Street, Alabama City, which is Gaston, thirty-five nine oh four. Anything y'all can do would be a, would be a Godsend, really, because I say again, the woman is for real, she's doing it, she's, she's bringing them in, and she's getting the right thing done. Instead of euthanizing them, she's saving their lives and putting them in new homes, and so up them are being adopted. The next thing I wanna do is tomorrow is Veterans Day. If you don't do anything else, and by the way, Public Works put up all the flags around town that you see, the Patriot Association paid for them, but Public Works every year sees that they're up on flag days. But y'all, for goodness sakes, if, if it wasn't for the veterans, thank goodness for them, there's a possibility we're gonna be speaking English now, so give it some deep thought and thank a veteran tomorrow.
One announcement is that the city's landfill will not be, will be closed tomorrow in observance of Veterans Day, and the garbage route will run on their normal schedule, and I would just like to say also to the veterans, happy, happy Veterans Day. I had a father that was a veteran, my brother was a veteran, and my husband was a veteran, and I have an uncle that's still alive, he's eighty-eight, and he's a veteran out there in Colleen, Texas, which is near Fort Hood, so I appreciate all of those who serve for our country, even those families who lost once in the service of our country. Just wanna say, we need to continue to be united, we need to continue to pray, and we need to continue to put others as well as ourselves first, and we can make this nation what it's, can be. All of us have to work together, but it takes unity, and it also takes prayer. I ask for a motion to adjourn.